It is time to call the Scott County Board of Education to order.
Ms. Chairman, this time I would like to announce the April Scott County Schools Volunteer of the Month. As always, we're so thankful for the time given that you give out of your own personal time to give to our students in our schools. First, we only have two this month. We have first from Huntsville Middle School, Nathan Flayton. And from Winfield Elementary School, April Carter. At this time, we would like to name the Scott High School Stan, Scott County Chamber of Commerce, Student of the Month. Natalie Nicole Queener. Seventeen-year-old daughter of Tony and Karen Queener of the Huntsville community was selected by our Scott High staff as April's Stan Student of the Month. Natalie is a member of the Beta Club and Jake Branks Baptist Church. Natalie will graduate May of 2018 under the Tennessee Promise Program and will attend Ole State in the fall. Natalie has a strong desire to give back to her community, and she has selected to serve her community as an occupational therapist. Thank you. Ms. Chairman, that concludes the presentation of the Student Volunteer of the Month.
May he be used to remain by in the honor to address the board.
Would you want to address the board here?
Yes, please. Hey, can I come up here?
Who's there?
My name's Gabe Crone. I'm here to represent Scott County Fair. I know that there's been a schedule change, days required in service days, but I'm here to ask on behalf of the kids that participate in four-H programs that do come to Scott County Fair. It is something in the community that's for the kids. I don't want to take a day away from school. Maybe if we could maybe come up with a day pass, or we don't want to affect perfect attendance. We don't want to disrupt the material that needs to be taught. We just want every child to have the opportunity that they've had for 91 years, and that's my request. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Keating and myself, we were trying to look at the calendar. Okay, we're going to come up with some ideas, some other ways, see what we can do.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the principals. Scott, we'll let you go first.
Thank you. And if I forget anything, hopefully they'll, most time I like to go behind them because stuff I forget, I'll write down real quick, so maybe I'll keep that stuff up here. I put yearbooks, I think it's on everybody's spot. They just come out of the box today. Kids will be giving those, they'll be giving out to the students tomorrow and Friday. Ms. Annie Gisserson does a great job with it, and this year we started a, one of the classes, this class we started, journalism and yearbook class. So the kids, kids have always helped with it, but they've even, especially the certain center rate kids that's been in the class, they've really had an extra hand in the yearbook this year. So I think they've done a great job with that. Also, I put a spring calendar that everybody will knows, and it changes daily, there's a few things. It's actually changed since we've done it yesterday three or four times. So, and then there's some stuff that I know we've missed, and so this is, this will change, but the dates are always on our school website, and Annie does a great job with that. But I just want to put a couple of highlights. Our eighth grade prom is going to be tomorrow night in Amelia's. Retired teachers will be at Fairview next Friday on the 20th, looking forward to that. Music festival is May the 4th at 6:00. Their graduation is Monday, May the 7th. And then our, we're a month away, but our middle school play, we've been really working on it. If you came to the one in Christmas, it was, the whole gym was packed, so I'm hoping for a great crowd for that. Kids are doing a tremendous job working on that already. And then a couple other notes, the Nancy Swain Walk is this Friday. And then, this basically our pre-K and kindergarten portfolios have been submitted as of Monday. So I want to really brag on my teachers at Fairview, they have done a great job on getting that done, getting that submitted. So that's all I have, I wish you guys have a good day.
Thank you. Here's good.
This is the first time I can say D and D for one Scott student. So mine's going to be really short. I will repeat everything he said. We are getting ready for testing, that begins on Monday. So again, we're just asking for parents to please make sure students are there on time, that they're getting breakfast and those type of things. I do want to thank Mr. Blakely and the Maintenance Department, we got our water station, the kids love it, and I appreciate that they were so patient and were very accommodating to try to get that in the best place. I know it probably wasn't easy for them as far as installation, but they did honor that because they realized that was a good spot for us, and so they did everything they could to get it there, and we appreciate that. Ms. Keating, I've not had to aggravate her as much this year on testing, but I do appreciate everything you do to help us. She's there every time we call and have meltdowns and calls the state for us, and I appreciate you doing all that. I appreciate technology. We have really wore them out this year, and Greg and them have really, I know they're hearing us night and day, and we appreciate everything they're doing, going that extra mile to make sure we can get all those kids through those computer labs and get all that testing done. So we appreciate everything that they're doing. I know they're working hard, and they're working long hours, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Brandy.
And we're also participating in the Nancy Swain Walk on Friday. We are ready to begin TCAP testing on Monday, and hopefully next week, weather permitting, we will wrap up soccer season and try to get our tournament started and over with. It's been another weather season, which has got us rescheduling games, but we're hoping to get it kicked next week. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Tanya.
Tomorrow, our eighth grade and pre-K students will be taking their pack and gown pictures at that time of the year because we only have about six weeks left of school. So that will be happening tomorrow. We have a soccer game, like Ms. Brandy said, that's going to be wrapping up our regular season tomorrow night at Winfield, which it will begin at 4:30, a little bit differently. They're going to be doing eighth grade night, tomorrow night, so they will start at 4:30. And as everyone said, testing does begin on Monday. Parents, just please make sure those kids have eaten a good breakfast, and they can eat at 3:00 at school, by the way, so if they get there on time. We start serving breakfast at 7:20 all the way until 8:00, so they have a good window of opportunity to come and eat with us. And even though testing is going to take us about two and a half weeks, please know that those students, little Bobby does not test all seven hours during that day. He may have an hour-long test, but then there are so many students that need to be filtered through, it does take us most of the day to get students tested and ready because there's four, you know, subparts to most of his tests. So please be aware of that, they're not, one child is not testing all day long, but you know, I think the longest test that they have to sit through in a day is 85 minutes, and then it goes to 50, so, but that is very, very important. Just want to congratulate Mr. Hunt, I emailed everybody on the school board, winning that Donors Choose. He got some grant supplies for the upkeep of our band instruments, which I would love if you could stop by and see all those instruments that he's purchased or been given or written grants for. He does that on his own time, he never, he tells me after the fact, oh, by the way, we've received a grant. Mr. Holland's Opus Grant, I think he got that grant for like $19,000. Somebody works really hard, and he does a really good job with these students. And I don't have anything else unless you have something. I will be giving you a calendar, but I'm going to wait until the 1st of May because there are so many things that have to be put on there, and I don't want to have to tell you how much we've had to reschedule until then. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brandy, your question's out.
Well, I'll be honest, I'm not really sure what's going on right now. No, I'm just kidding. I'll start out with this. Tomorrow, we are participating again in the annual emergency demonstration that the local fire departments have put together for us, so we're really excited about that. We've got some new things this year, and I think it's going to even be better than last year, so excited about that. That will be tomorrow morning, beginning around 8:15, 8:30, up until about lunchtime. So if you hear lights, sirens, if you see like, it looks like everything's going on down Scott High Drive, don't panic. It's all part of the demonstration, nobody's hurt, there is no emergency situation. They're putting that on as a prom safety awareness event. It's something we did last year, and they've gotten together, and that just, I don't want to start listing people that thank in that, I'll say that for later, because there are so many community members and organizations that are involved in that, and it's really, it was something that was kind of spearheaded, I think, by one person or a couple of people, and it's turned into something wonderful. And so, we're so excited to be part of that again, and really looking forward to that tomorrow. But don't panic about the lights and the sirens, it'll be okay. So that's tomorrow. And then, on Friday, I'm sure other people have said, is the Annual Children's Center Walk, and we have a group of seniors that are going to that. Of course, we are testing in the spring as well. Our window is the exact same as the elementary's window this year. And again, we have about 700 of the 825 students that will be testing during that window, so it will take us every single day of that window. Now, every kid isn't testing every day. Our test will last anywhere from 45 minutes all the way up to 85 minutes in one session, but some of those tests will have as much as four sessions. We've tried to divide those out where they're not in more than two sessions a day, so that it is, but it is more of a marathon than a sprint, okay? So attendance is super important for those kids to be there every single day. If they get behind on that testing, they can't move ahead. It becomes, they have to take part one before they can take part two, take part two before part three. So that gets to be complicated, so just remind parents that attendance is super important on those days as well. Guys, as soon as we get outside of that testing window, we are right into those spring, those big spring events for us. I do also have a calendar for you that I'll send to you on email. We're just finalizing those dates and times, so again, I want to make sure I get that to you once we have finished that and there are no changes. Several other things, as you can imagine, with a three-week testing window, as much as we would like to kind of shut things down, it's just impossible with that amount of time. So there are several other things that are going on. While, while that is happening, we're going to try to keep that to a minimum for disruption for those students, but it will happen. Prom is April the 28th. That prom is at the Chitwood Farms on, it's in Winfield, yes, quote, "on Chitwood Mountain", but it's not "on" Chitwood Mountain, okay? It is actually at a venue location. It is the same type of setup that we would have in the gym, it's just they already have pre-decorations there, and it's more of a rested venue. This was one of the things that the students asked for, and so there is a completely passable road that we've taken, minivans and cars, I have a regular four-door car up there, it's not anything that requires any type of special transportation. There is a back way that goes in that I think is a little bit rougher, but there will be signs, and students already have directions when they're buying their tickets of the way to go, and of course, there'll be balloons and signs and make sure that they can get up there in an appropriate way. Of course, there'll be faculty sponsors there, as always supervising, and there will be officers there as well, as we always have at prom, okay? But if you have any questions about that, or if you get any concerns about that, please let me know. We'll do our very best to alleviate those and talk with anybody about those concerns if they have those. But it is an event venue, there's several different events, weddings and things that are held up there, so it's just a different location for the kids, and that was one thing that they had to ask for this year, so we tried to honor that and appreciate the people at Chitwood Farms for working with us to make that very affordable for us, so we really appreciate them in doing that. Do want to update you just a minute on some of the security measures that we've been working on. We are still having an SRO on campus. I will say that's 90% of the time. We may get a little bit of a gap in there on a day or two as shifts are changing, but for the most part, we have an officer there all the time, so we're really thankful for that. That has helped a lot to alleviate a lot of stresses and concerns on campus, not just from adults, teachers and staff members, but students are so thankful for that, so I'll just put that out there and say I encourage everyone involved in that conversation to make that a permanent thing because it's been, it's been huge for us. So really thankful for that. We did finally get those fire door locks changed out, that was a bit of a process, a little bit more than we thought it was going to be. Finally got those changed out, keys distributed, and so now all of those fire doors are remaining locked, not just the ones on the main side, but all of those are remaining locked. It does create some flow issues a little bit here and there, but we're going to do our very best to deal with that until we can get a more permanent solution. Our motto has become, it might not be the best, but it's better, and we can do better. And so that's what we're trying to do, is to do better. Mr. Allen Hill came by this afternoon and came to the school to take some measurements for some changes that we have looked at. Also showed him a couple of things that I think are in need of some immediate repair, and he took a look at those and jotted those down. He's going to get all that information to you, Mr. Holby. Sorry, I haven't talked to you about that yet, but he's going to get all that information to you, and I think, he seemed pretty confident that we can include it in whatever we were going to go ahead and do in this first round, and then that way, that would be solved. So we're making progress there. I'm late today because I actually had a crisis team meeting scheduled this afternoon, and met with that team, which involves faculty, staff members, and a couple of parents as well, and they're very encouraged about the progress that we're making along those strides. So again, just want to tell you guys, thank you for your support in that, and that our efforts are continuing. Again, we're not to the best place yet, but we are definitely doing better on those things. And I'll answer any questions that you have with what voice I have left.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. South.
I apologize, I've been in and out, we've had a little bit of emergency and it's coming in late, but it's, we'll, I'll let you know more about that in a little bit. I just have a couple of things to add. Our student won the Nancy Swain t-shirt contest, she will be with her classmates leading off on Friday for the walk, so we're excited about that, and congratulations to her. So I can't wait to hear about their good day, and she'll get something displayed at school, so we're very excited for her. We also have, I'm a little scattered now, I apologize. I'm getting ready to turn in all of our portfolios, I'm sure you've already heard all that, and getting ready for TCAP, we're doing that. We had also a big surprise when we came back from our break. We came in to five computers sitting in, which I've not even told Mr. Vaughn about yet, it's very exciting. I can't wait to talk with him to figure out what we're going to do with them yet. Senator Corker sent them, and he said it was because of our participation in the years past with the computers for the schools. And Huntsville Elementary, we're always picked this year to receive those, so we're very excited that we got those. We have them stashed right now until we could talk to Mr. Vaughn to be able to do something. Right now, we've been focused all on testing, so that's where everything's been, that we were going to get him to come out and put those up and do his magic with those. So we're excited that we got those, and I know he's excited too. So, but anyway, that's basically all I have, just thoughts, what everybody's already saying, so unless you have something for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Kind of back up what everybody's already said about the 10 ready exams, the end of course exams that'll be going on at Elementary and Middle Schools and the high school starting next week. We do have, Ms. Keating put some information online, it's on our website, it explains anything about test procedures, the amount of percentages that the test counts for each student. I think there've been some false misconceptions out there about the percentage that it does. You have everything online, I think Ms. Keating gets it up to the newspapers, I've also two. So anyway, that's for the parents, if they want to go online, they can read that. There's also more information on the Tennessee State website if they need to go through that. Again, like I said, that will begin Monday, and I know, feel very confident, number one, in our teachers, in our students, in our faculty members that have gone above and beyond to prepare our students for the test, and also in our technology department for the job that they have done, getting us ready for this as we start online assessments, especially in five through eight this year, am I saying that correctly, along with nine through 12, which has been, has been doing for the past couple of years. So I feel very confident that we're ready in that process, as much as anyone across the state of Tennessee to do that. I would encourage parents, as our principal also said too, to have the kids there on time. We will make sure and try to do our best from our cash management department to get the kids there on time, make sure they have a good breakfast that morning, and make sure they're relaxed and ready to go. No need to stress out, just going out with a plan on the mind and do the best so they are prepared. As Ms. Brandy said, our other county soccer tournament will begin next week, starts Tuesday at Winfield Elementary School, and actually, we're probably a little bit ahead of schedules compared to the last couple of years, on getting this played and getting it through. Even though we've had some equal weather, we've also been able to play some games in some, which is not great weather, but let's get some games played. Also, the Children's Center Walk with Nancy Swain Waters tomorrow will be, it's up this Friday. That will start up at the Onana City Hall, and it will end at Plantall Electric. They'll have lunch there for everyone on that day, normally around between 11, 11:15. So if you get a chance, if you can get a walk, go to Plantall Electric and see everyone as they're heading in right there for that. Also, remind you the board, in the morning at 8:30, we'll have a budget meeting with the Budget Committee and the County Commission of the County Building tomorrow at 8:30. They've allotted us 15 minutes of time, so if you're able to be there.
The County Building or?
No, not out, it's the County Building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're not using our venue this year, so I know it will be up here.
Okay.
So anyway, tomorrow at 8:30, we have two teams. That's all I have, Ms. Shaw, have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. Okay, item seven, adoption of agenda. In accordance with Board Policy Number 1.403, the Scott County Board of Education should adopt an agenda of all items to be acted upon during the regular monthly meeting of April 11th, 2018. May I have a motion to approve the April 11th, 2018 agenda?
Make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Item 9A, approved trips. Board approval is needed for out-of-state overnight school trips. May I have a motion to approve the following out-of-state overnight trips? Firstville Elementary School Beta Club, Nashville, Tennessee, May the 14th through the 16th of 2018. Fairview Elementary School Girls Basketball Team Camp in Sevierville, Tennessee, June 2nd through the 5th, 2018. And Huntsville Middle School Girls Basketball Team Camp in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, May the 29th and 30th of 2018. Camp in Sevier, Pigeon Forge, June the 4th through the 7th of 2018.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Item 9A, approved trips. Board approval is needed for out-of-state overnight school trips. May I have a motion to approve the following out-of-state overnight trips? Firstville Elementary School Beta Club, Nashville, Tennessee, May the 14th through the 16th of 2018. Fairview Elementary School Girls Basketball Team Camp in Sevierville, Tennessee, June 2nd through the 5th, 2018. And Huntsville Middle School Girls Basketball Team Camp in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, May the 29th and 30th of 2018. Camp in Sevier, Pigeon Forge, June the 4th through the 7th of 2018.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Ms. Stanley.
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Thompson.
Aye.
Item 9B, request to bid. In accordance with Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 2.806, concerning bids and qualifications, all purchases of supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services in excess of $10,000 shall be based on competitive bids. May I have a motion to request that the Scott County Finance Director bid the following for the 2018-2019 school year? Related services for special education, OT, PT, speech, services for behavioral analysis, vision, and hearing.
Make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Stanley.
Aye.
Item 9C, TSPA membership dues. Approval is needed to continue the membership and pay the dues for Tennessee School Board Association. May I have a motion to approve the continuation of the TSPA membership with the Scott County Board of Education and pay the dues for school year 2018-2019 in the amount of $5,345.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Ms. Stillcox.
Aye.
Ms. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Item 9D, approved budget amendments. In pursuit to Board Policy Number 2.201, the Scott County Board of Education needs to approve budget amendments in order to make the line item transfers needed to balance the budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018. This action will allow funds to be applied to areas of the budget that lack sufficient funds to complete the school year. May I have a motion to approve the following amendments for the 2017-2018 school year? Addendum Budget Amendment Number 5 and CTE Amendment Number 3.
Make that motion. Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Ms. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox.
Aye.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry. It threw me off. I always had a line without order over there, it kind of moved it over. Right now.
Okay, item 9E, extended utilization of vehicles. In accordance with provisions on TCA Section 49-6-2109, the Board must approve the utilization of buses that have 16 years of service before they can remain in service. May I have a motion to approve the extended utilization of the following buses? And there are several, do I need to read all those being numbers? Just the best number?
Should remember.
Okay. That's 01-1, that's 01-2, 01-3, 01-4, 01-5, 02-2, 02-3, 02-4, 02-5, 02-6, 04-1, 04-2, 04-3, 04-4, 04-5, 04-6, 04-7.
Make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I would like to ask the question, now, Mr. Holmes is not here, do we know about how many buses that's going to come up on us in the next two?
That we know of right now.
For next year?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, any other discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Ms. Stillcox. Mr. Stillcox.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Sharp.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Item nine A, amend two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school calendar. The Scott County school system will exempt its entire bank of thirteen stock holidays for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year as of Wednesday, March the twenty-first. All unscheduled school closings after that date will have to be made up. We are requesting board approval to amend our current calendar to allow us to change May the twenty-fourth from a service day to a full-day talk, and May the twenty-fifth as service day with May the twenty-sixth as an abbreviated day. May I have a motion to amend the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school calendar as follows. May the twenty-fourth from the service day to a full-day talk. May the twenty-fifth from full-day talk to service day, and may the twenty-sixth, last day of school, abbreviated day.
Motion, second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the roll call.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Kidd.
Aye.
Ms. Abbott.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.